Afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the afternoon session of Plymouth's annual town meeting. We're continuing with Article Three. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to establish the maximum amount that may be spent from each fund during fiscal year 2020, beginning on July one, two thousand and nineteen, for the revolving funds established in town bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in accordance with General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, E and one-half, as follows. You do have a spreadsheet. It's a majority vote. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Three. Approval of this article will set the fiscal year twenty twenty spending caps for each of the revolving funds pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, E and a half, as they appear in page fifty-one of your books.
Further discussion on Article Three. It is, as I said, a majority vote. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries by majority, Article Four. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote pursuant to Chapter one seventy-three of the general bylaws to authorize the Cedarville Steering Committee and the Plymouth Centre Steering Committee to continue in review in three years at two thousand and twenty-two annual town meeting. It's a majority vote. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Four. Approval of this article will authorize the Cedarville Steering Committee and the Plymouth Centre Steering Committee to continue with the review in three years at the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting.
Further discussion. It's a majority vote. Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We now move on to Article Five. We have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. We next move to Article Six in the warrant for the annual town meeting, and we have a motion from the Finance Committee. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight, to authorize the annual stipends salaries of elected town officials as follows. And you have the breakdown. It's a majority. A roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Six. Approval of this article will set the annual stipends for the Board of Selectmen and Town Moderator. There are no changes to the stipend amounts this year. The chairman of the Board of Selectmen will receive forty-five hundred dollars. The four remaining selectmen will receive four thousand dollars each, and the moderator will receive two thousand. The funding for these stipends is included in Article seven A, the general fund budget.
Further discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I'll call for the vote one more time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Could the noes please stand and be recognized? Everett Malaguti, anyone else? Thank you. We'll now move to Article Seven in our warrant, and we have a number of motions before you, along with many motions to amend. We are going to be going through the spreadsheet that was provided in your packet of materials. It looks like this. We'll be going through the sections. We're going to begin following comments from Mr. Salerno, a presentation from Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. Do you have a point of order, Mr. Neville?
I do. Will we be voting on each subcommittee report, or do I need to make a motion to that effect, Mr. Moderator?
You'll be voting as the motions are presented in your motion book. So consistent with the motion book, you'll be voting on all those.
From the motion book, okay.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at.
The motion book.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Salerno.
Respect to, with respect to Subcommittee Report A, in a unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve the budget presented in Subcommittee Report A, which includes a net increase of sixty-one thousand and eighteen dollars to the Board of Selectmen's budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report A. This increase over the selectmen's budget is mainly fifty-two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, personnel services, for the addition of a health technician's position. The Health Department made a compelling case for this position to a considerably skeptical Finance Committee. Also restored, this motion restores thirty thousand dollars for Title Five inspections, which seemed a sensible spending for a town that charges the permit application for the inspection. Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, presenting.
I'm actually presenting on the budget in total, just to go over a few things regarding Article seven A, and then through seven F, just some general comments that I'd like to make at the beginning of your deliberations when you vote the budget article. As you heard earlier, there is a lot of documentation that you received this year that's a little bit different than last year's documents. I just want to say that we heard you, and we recognized a lot of the questions that you've been asking, a lot of the information that you wanted to see. We worked with Advisory and Finance Committee to incorporate some of those things into how you vote the budget. For example, you're going to be doing it by Subcommittee Report. That's how it's reviewed by Advisory and Finance. We incorporated all the budget documents that are in your budget book and in your book of recommendations to include those Subcommittee Letters, so those are really important, like A, B, C, D, and so on. So all the materials have the reference of the Subcommittee Letter, so that you can find those budgets and documents, hopefully easily, within the budget book. Actually, let me see. It's up there. Okay. This was just some of my general comments about some of the new documents that you were going to get, or the documents that we sent to you in the mail. Everyone went over them earlier, so I don't want to repeat myself. You've already gone through the special town meeting. So this document right here, or this slide right here, I want to maybe just spend a couple of minutes on, because this is some of the new information that we're providing to you in the budget book. After the budget summary, which is a similar report that you get every year, that's just basically the budget that you're voting on, after that document, we included what's called a sources and uses document. And that sources and uses document, this is really the framework that I use when developing the budget every year. We start with this in September and October. We look at revenues. We look at all different kinds of things. We sit with the selectmen, and we go over what those sources of revenues are going to look like. So that's where we develop the message for the budget, if it's going to be level funded or level service, or those kinds of things. So that's on page fourteen and fifteen of the small blue book, the budget book. And I think that's a really good information, good information to have, and I hope that it's more understanding of how the budget is put together, and what those revenue sources are, and what those revenue sources pay for. The next document in there is, we gave you a sort of a history on the property taxes, what we raise, what the debt exclusions have been, what new growth has been, what the levy increase has been, what excess levy capacity has been, tax rates, and so on. The next page, page seventeen, is our state aid history. So you can see how, over the years, I put in a little graph there. Let me show it up on the slide here. Oops. It's not on the slides yet, but in your books, the state aid history has sort of flattened out a little bit. Over the years, in developing this budget, state aid has decreased, unfortunately, different programs that they've not reimbursed us for over the years, and now they've developed a new formula for state aid, which includes some revisions to the Chapter Seventy formula. And it looks like that formula is going to sort of get up to speed over a seven-year process. So the first year, and the governor's number, the state aid number actually is less than what we got last year for Chapter Seventy, and also the charter school increased in there. So we're hoping that as the House and Senate go through the budget, and before they announce the final budget, they vote on it in June, I'm hoping that those numbers will grow, because when I establish the budget every year, we use a level-funded state aid. So we're hoping that it's going, we're going to get at least what we got last year. So keep your fingers crossed there. The next page in that book is a ten-year history on state aid. These are actual revenue numbers, local receipts, property taxes, and other types of taxes that we get in. That's on page eighteen. Page nineteen is our snow and ice expenditure history. That shows you over like a fifteen-year period what our average annual expenditure is for snow and ice, and it's approximately one point two million dollars this past year, this particular year that we're in right now. It's not going to be that much. It's probably going to be more around the, let's see, five, the, our budget was five hundred and sixty. We've gone over maybe about three hundred and fifty thousand. My budget every year that we're actually going to go over about seven hundred and fifty thousand to get us up to that one point two. So that'll, that'll look good on, as we get, go through this process. Page twenty of that book is showing you, based on two thousand and nineteen's tax rate, what the, what a million dollars would cost you in the budget. And I tried to show you, based on home value, it would be for that, based on home value, a million dollars would be nine cents per thousand dollar of your home value. So for the average home, which is three hundred and fifty-four thousand, that would cost someone thirty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. And then underneath, below, it shows you, but what if I don't have a average home value? What, what would it cost me? So hopefully, that's helpful information. And then page twenty-one through twenty-two is the departmental equipment line items that's being requested through the town departments within the budget that you're going to be voting on. You vote departmental equipment within each line on the budget document that you're going to see. This budget document is sorted by Subcommittee. So any department that's asking for departmental equipment, it'll actually, there'll be a line item on there saying what the departmental equipment is. So those pages in the budget book will give you the detail behind what they're asking. And this replaces the old Article Eight that we used to do a couple of years ago, used to vote on them separately. So you are going to vote on them separately, it's just within the budget, they're separated out in different line items. So that's a lot of the new information that we're providing to you. Hopefully, it's helpful. You can let me know later if anything else that you want to see, we can include in those books going forward in the future. So the next slide, this shows you our revenue sources. This is really the sources and uses of the general fund budget. These are the items that are on page fourteen and fifteen of that budget book, and these represent the totals. So to fund everything on the general fund, general fund side of things, it's going to take two hundred and forty-three million, and that's broken up by property taxes, state aid, local receipts, and other available funds. The primary expenses on the expense side, obviously, is the school and fixed costs, and then public safety, debt service, other items that we need to raise, public works, and then some of the other departments. Property taxes is the prominent revenue source to help us fund our budget. The next slide right here is really the, it's the bar graph that was on the left-hand side on the other page, but now it's shown in a pie chart. So property taxes makes up seventy-six percent of the two hundred and forty-three million that we have to raise. Fourteen percent of it comes from state aid, eight percent from local receipts, two percent from other available funds. My first budget that I did here in Plymouth was fiscal two thousand and eight, and at that time, nineteen percent came from state aid, sixty-nine percent came from property taxes. As that state aid goes down or levels off and costs rise, we have to get the revenue source from somewhere, and we look at local receipts. Every year, departments look at their different fees or different structures that they charge for different things, and we do, we either do annual updates, or we do updates to those every couple of years, but primarily, the revenue source comes from property taxes. And as I said before, state aid looks like it's going to come in, hopefully, about level-funded. Let's see. As we move closer to the fall, when we set our tax rate, we'll know then how our local receipts came in at the end of this fiscal year, and we'll make some modifications to try to increase local receipts and decrease what's coming from property taxes. If state aid comes in higher than level funding, that will obviously decrease what we're going to raise from property taxes. The couple of new revenue sources that haven't started yet, but they will start to come in, probably in fiscal twenty, is the three percent excise that we voted on, the retail marijuana, and the six percent local option hotel motel on the short-term rentals. So we have not estimated those revenues in the budget yet. Department of Revenue won't allow us to do that until we actually start to see how much those revenues are going to be, then we can start incorporating those into the budget. So hopefully, by next year's budget, fiscal twenty-one, we'll be able to incorporate those in and try to reduce what we have to raise on the property taxes. This next slide, sorry, I'm trying to make sure I get in the right direction here. Okay. This slide right here is, so seventy-six percent is raised in property taxes. So this slide right here, I stole from my Director of Assessing when she does her annual tax classification hearing with the Board of Selectmen in December. She shows this slide, and this is two thousand and nineteen home values, which in total in Plymouth are about ten and a half billion dollars. And this represents all of the components of who pays these property taxes. So eighty-one percent is residential, comes from the residential part of the seventy-six percent of taxes that need to be raised. Nine percent come from commercial, two percent from an industrial, five percent from energy, and three percent from personal property. The next slide, the next three slides, I just wanted to sort of give you some stats on Plymouth, and as we go through these, I'm just trying to make you understand, and I know you do, because you live here and you see as you go through the community what we have here for services and the size of our community, that it's, it's very big, and the budget is very large. We have one hundred and three square miles, thirty-seven miles of beachfront, road miles that we maintain, three hundred and eighty miles. We have other roads, which are exclusionary roads, I understand, which make up mostly the private roads, and also state roads. That is about two hundred and seven miles. The population is over sixty thousand, and it goes up during the summer, and who knows what that number is, but we have to provide services for all of those people. Registered motor vehicles in Plymouth are over sixty-nine thousand, sixty-nine thousand vehicles, and that represents our most recent motor vehicle excise commitment that just came out within the last month or so. We have over thirteen hundred boats registered in Plymouth that we assess for boat excises. The number of parcels assessed, this includes all parcels, commercial, single-family homes, condominiums, there's over thirty-one thousand parcels assessed. Number of registered voters is over forty-two thousand. Current developments, and these are projects that, on the Community of Developments website, they update a listing of sort of current projects and what's been going on in town. They list forty-two projects, nine of them are commercial, seven mixed-use, twenty-six residential, and combined on there is over twenty-seven hound, twenty-seven hundred units of housing, or in other lots approved that are under construction or built within at least the last two years. In two thousand and eighteen, building permits for single-family, for residential was seven hundred and fifty-five. That was three hundred and nineteen more than the previous year before. Our bud, let's see, yeah. Budget size is two hundred and sixty-three million when you include general fund, enterprise funds, and the CPA fund, and other items that we need to raise on the recap. Our bond rating is a double A+, which is an excellent bond rating for a community of our size. The human capital in Plymouth, we have over twelve hundred employees, full-time employees on the school side, over five hundred employees on the town side. We have twelve collective bargaining units between the two, school and town, that we have to manage all of those people through those collective bargaining agreements, and each one of them are unique in and of themselves to try to manage. Last year, two thousand and eighteen, we sent out two thousand six hundred and four W-two's. So we had two thousand six hundred and four people work for us in some kind of capacity. So that included all of those full-time people, but the, the other eight hundred and forty-three are the part-timers, seasonals, substitutes over at the school department, election workers, elected officials, our senior tax abatement workers, and there's probably others that I'm missing, but wanted you to just to understand the number of employees that we employ and that go through both HR departments. It's, there's just a lot of resources that need to be able to manage all the human capital that we have. The number of retirees and spouses that both of our HR departments manage with regards to all of their benefits, there's over nineteen hundred employees, retirees and their spouses who are on benefit plans from Plymouth. The next slide just shows you our school buildings and our town buildings, and how they compare to each other. We've heard a lot, obviously, we've heard it today, we've heard it within the last couple of years, we have to spend more of a focus on our town buildings, and we are doing that. Over the last three to four years, we have increased the town facility maintenance budget by over a hundred and thirty percent. We've hired a full-time facilities manager. We're going to be hiring an operations manager and potential HVAC technician, and we're trying to build up that department to take care of those buildings. On the school side, they've got thirteen buildings, the town side, we have thirty-two. There's eighty-six positions on the school side, seventy-eight of them are custodians. On the town side, we have twenty-four positions, which includes both our buildings and parks and grounds. Thirteen of those are custodians, and ten of those are in parks. The combined budget for the facilities over at the schools, which includes the facility department itself, plus each of the school department's custodial budgets, is a combined six million dollars. On the town side, between all of our facility budgets, it's about two and a half million dollars. Both sides of the budget, we compete with ourselves, each department competes with each other for capital needs. Our process, as you know, is we go through a capital improvement committee, where each department presents all of their capital, and those get ranked. And we try to, on the ranking side of things, when they're looking at those projects, they look at different criteria to try to see what's going to, what is, has to jump to the top, and those are the projects that we concentrate on. So you'll see in Article Nine that we do have some facilities and building maintenance projects to try to address some of the issues that are happening at the fire station and at some of the other buildings. The school department does have the luxury, though, to use some of their budget to also do some facility maintenance. Where on the town side, we don't necessarily have that capability. We, we need to be more mindful, I think, as we develop the budgets in the future, to try to incorporate some of these maintenance, more repairs and maintenance types, type of things, into the facility maintenance budget versus asking for it in capital, because it's really not a capital request. These are things that we need to be doing every day. So we're going to sort of focus on that as we go through the budget process next year and into the future. This slide right here, I wanted to show you was, I mean, Plymouth's in a unique situation in Massachusetts, we're one of probably about twenty-four, twenty-five communities that have, that are very large, one of the largest communities in Massachusetts that has a budget over two hundred million. And as you can see from the list, there's a lot of cities in, that we sort of have the same budget size, but each of these cities and towns have unique, unique things going on within them. A lot of them have a lot of commercial development, so they don't rely as heavily on the residential part, but the unique thing about Plymouth and some of the communities that I would compare us to, which is Barnstable, Quincy, and Framingham, is more of a hometown feel, you know, where you still have villages within your community. There's a lot of residential, there's not as much commercial. I know that Framingham does have a lot more commercial than we do, Quincy, a little bit more, but I think we sort of, we're similarly like the town of Barnstable, which includes all of the villages, a lot of the villages on Cape Cod. So when you look at our average tax bill in Plymouth, which is three hundred and fifty-four thousand, we compare very similarly to those other communities that I think we're more like than the communities like Springfield or Chicopee. Our average tax bill is just around the same amount. Framingham's is slightly higher, but I just wanted to show that to you, because I know that we hear a lot, you know, we can't go up on our taxes, we can't, we can't, we can't, but to provide all of these services that you see in your budget book and that you hear during our discussions, you know, a lot of it comes from our taxes. And for, for us to have these services, we need to pay for them. I know the school department's presentation this morning by Jim Sorensen, the chairman of the school committee, talked about how the schools, you know, are trying to be a little bit more above the state average, and it's, it's services that we all like to have, and it's very similar on the town side. Our tax rate is above the state average. The state average is about forty-five hundred dollars, where the average in Plymouth is about fifty-eight hundred dollars. So this slide right here shows you sixty-three percent of the homes in Plymouth are valued at that average of three hundred and fifty-five thousand or less. About another eleven percent will bring you up to four hundred thousand. So almost seventy-four percent of our home values in Plymouth are four hundred thousand dollars or less. Most of your constituents live our home values in Plymouth are $400,000 or less. Most of your constituents live in these homes. A smaller portion are the homes that are between 500 and 750, over 750 to a million. It's about, about 13% in that, in those areas. So we just wanted to really show you what the Plymouth makeup looks like. This slide right here should look familiar to you. It's in your budget book. It just really shows you again how much a million dollars would cost the average taxpayer, plus if you don't have those average homes, what that would look like. Sorry. I have fat fingers. Okay. The A&amp;F recommendations for new positions that are in the budget, in the town budget this year versus last year. The, we are looking for an assistant human resources director, public health technician, electrician, and maintenance worker on the sewer side. These are recommendations that are in those subcommittee reports by the advisory and finance committee. Their full-time equivalents, all of our collective bargaining agreements for any and all of our positions are on our website under the H, human resources webpage. So if anyone's ever interested in all the different collective bargaining agreements, you can find that information there. And then lastly, this is each of the budgets that you'll be voting on in Article 7. Article 7A will be broken up into several subcommittee reports, but the total of that budget is 229 million and then you'll vote on each of the enterprise funds separately. On the general fund side, it is most likely that your tax bills for the average homeowner are going to go up between about $250 to $275 based on how we end up reconciling our budget before we set our tax rate in the fall. That's for the average home and that's consistent with every other year prior to this. And then as far as the enterprise funds, we will be meeting with the board of selectmen to recommend rates for sewer, solid waste, and water in, probably in early May. And we did hear from, the budget that you'll be voting today in the sewer enterprise funds does include principal and interest on the second borrowing for the sewer project, but we heard from DEP, Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, that they're not going to be borrowing. So it's going to shift the schedule off a little bit. So when we come back into the fall, we will be reducing that budget to reflect a later borrowing timeframe. I think we're going to be borrowing long-term in August for that second piece. So I just wanted to mention that to everyone. But as I said to you, this document and all the motions that you'll hear from advisory and finance and Mr. Salerno just read Subcommittee A's motion, so you'll be voting on each of those separately. Thanks.
Thank you. That was Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance for the town of Plymouth. And you'll see that as you look at the motion book, we have a number of motions that we will be voting throughout Article 7. In addition, today you received a handout which looks like this, which is helpful in terms of going through. And before we have speakers, I'm going to begin by going through the groupings and entertaining discussion as we go through the groupings. And I will also put before you the motions that relate to those groupings. So for example, in the first group of Article 7A administrative services, items 1 through 8, your book indicates that there's a motion to amend for line item 5, but that motion has been withdrawn. I do not have any other motions between items 1 through 8. Any discussions on items 1 through 8 in Article 7A? Patricia McCarthy.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank the finance committee for all their work and hard study of all the budgets and all of the issues that come before us. And I found it really helpful, their booklet they gave us on the minutes of their subcommittee reports and the meetings. And I'm speaking to the issue of the Health Department, Public Health, and for the recommendation from the finance committee on that budget. And in particular, for the addition of a health technician position. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that, I've gotten some information from Dr. Nate. He is away in military duty this weekend, so he's not here unfortunately, but anyway, just for the need for that additional position, that the Health Department is in charge of ensuring the compliance of all routine inspections for Title V compliance. And the position that would be added would be addressing many of these issues in that position. The Department of Public Health has, enforces state and board of health regulations and/or bylaws pertaining to the collection and removal of garbage, rubbish, et cetera. They primarily perform food safety, foodborne illness prevention inspections of food establishments and food handling establishment, establishes, mis, establishments, sorry. They are charged with enforcing public, the public facility and foods establishment FOG regulations and to be in compliance. That's the fats, oils, and grease from the state. And they maintain the private hauler programs for title, for septic. They serve as technical resources of watershed water quality and quantity and other natural resource areas that might, may impact public health for other departments and boards as well as the public as needed. And the position would also be responsible for ensuring that the town meets the Attorney General mandate that requires the Department of Public Health to ensure and manage that FOG program that will help ensure an optimal sewer system and will help restaurants and not penalize them to get into compliance. Position will also help the Board of Health ensure regulatory mandates are met and help the town avoid any financial penalties per the Attorney General's mandate. And with the issue with regards to Title V inspections, as you can see from what we've learned today and as we know in the past, the rate of growth in the town of Plymouth is huge and the issues for Title V inspections and re-inspections and inspections, and as the town moves forward, when cesspools automatically fail in a transfer property for those inspections. And they do many, many other things as well as provide health and wellness issues for us as a community, environmental. And the Public Health website offers you a lot of information on what the department does. And I am in support of the finance committee's recommendation for the increase in that budget over what the selectmen recommended. Thank you.
Ms. McCarthy, I did let you continue, but initially I was talking about items 1 through 8. I believe you spoke to item 9. That's okay, but the comments are as to item 9. So we'll now, if there are no other comments on the first eight items, we'll go to item 9. And I have a motion to amend line items 9 and 10 of Subcommittee Report A. Mr. Tavares moves to amend the motion made under Article 7A Subcommittee Report A by Mr. Salerno as follows. Decrease by 52,0818, the amount appropriated for Department of Inspection Services All Divisions, Personal Services, line item 9, for a total of 973,173. That will be a majority vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous. And also moves to decrease by 30,000 the amount appropriated for Department of Inspection Services All Divisions Other Expenses, line item 10, for a total of 74,465. Majority and a roll call. Would anyone care to speak in favor of that motion to amend by Mr. Tavares for the Board of Selectmen? Melissa O'Reggie, Town Manager.
The selectmen thought long and hard and debated about what to do whenever we put forward the additional staff, but they hear all of you as well when it comes to budgets and they had to make some choices. In this particular department, there have been, there has been some transition there. We have some new staff, we have a brand-new director, and although we favor growing the department, the selectmen felt that the time wasn't right. This might be something they bring back in the near future, but further evaluation was really needed before we just add more staff to the department.
Further discussion, Michael Hanlon.
Thanks to Lynn Barrett for all the good financial information that she provides to us. You all got the budget book. It's this thinner of the blue, two blue books. I just wanted to point out something that I think is important because it caught my attention as I was reviewing this stuff. If you turn to page 16 in that book, there's a table, property taxes history. And there's a column in that table, right kind of in the middle, it's called excess levy capacity. And if you looked all the way down to the bottom of that column, at the bottom, the number is 1.867 million dollars. That is our excess levy capacity. So I'm going to try and describe what that is. If I don't get quite right, I hope Lynn will correct me. The excess levy capacity is the difference between what the town is allowed to raise in property taxes under Proposition 2.5 and what it actually raises. So that number is only 1.8 million dollars. If you look up the table to 2013, it used to be 9.1 million dollars. Now, it's six or seven years later, it's down to 1.8 million dollars. And if you look to the right of that number, the 1.8, the number next to it is negative 2.5 million. That's the difference between 2019 and 2020. So if we, if that, so these are all estimates. I'm thinking a year from now, if we're sitting here looking over the budget and we have another estimate of losing 2.5 million dollars in the increase or decrease, or it would be a decrease in that levy capacity, we will be talking about a town-wide budget override vote. Have you thought about that? A budget override vote. It's not just 135 people, it's, how many voters were there, 40,000 or something? People voting on that budget. That's something you need to think about when you're voting on these articles this afternoon. And as I said this morning, we've been setting aside, this year we set aside $420,000 into that nuclear plant mitigation stabilization fund. It's there to take out, to subsidize this number, to maybe avoid a budget override vote for a couple of years. But we are very, whether it's next year or the year after, it's coming. You need to think about that when you're voting. Thank you.
Further discussion, yes. Gita Keen, Board of Health. Speaking of town meeting, we are doing items 9 to 10. Then I understand Catherine Holmes, you do want to do item 5. We'll come back to that next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and to all of you here today. I'm here as the Chair of the Board of Health to ask you to vote for the motion that you have in front of you, line items 9 and 10 of Subcommittee Report A, and against the motion to amend. I'm here to support the Department of Public Health Technician Position. Dr. Nate Horowitz Willis, as you've heard, is on military duty today and can't be with us, so I'm here in his stead. First, I want to say that all the new positions before you today are of value to the town. All of them have been carefully researched by their directors and you have difficult choices to make. Let's see if I can get this in the right. The only difference that I want to mention is that the Health Technician Position, as stated by FinCom and Mr. Salerno, is a revenue-generating position through inspections. That is a clear distinction to keep in mind. As I mentioned, Dr. Nate is on military duty, which is relevant to this new position. FinCom approved 52818 for the health agent. If the position is contracted, fringe may not apply or will not apply. Also, Dr. Nate, because of his military duty, does not receive healthcare benefits from the town. His fringe is negligible. He also gives back more into the general fund. It's about $10,000 of his salary because he is on active Air Force Reserve. The motion before you also recommends removing $30,000 from Dr. Nate's inspections and recommends that he do these inspections himself. And that is, and this is why he is giving back to the town over $20,000 of his own salary, again through military service. Today, you are going to be asked to vote to retain high-caliber employees through additional funding. This is the right thing to do, but I'd like you to keep this in mind when you vote for the healthcare technician position by not voting to amend. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on the motion to amend line item 9 will be the first vote. Betsy Hall.
Betsy Hall, Precinct 12.
Plymouth Town Meeting coming to you live.
I'm short.
From Plymouth North High School, April 6.
There we go. All right. So anyway, I'm Betsy Hall, and I'm going to vote for this. I think we desperately need this position. I think it's a very important position. But over the next year, as a, if I'm on the Committee of Precinct Chair or even if I'm not, I want to be personally and maybe even with a group of other town meeting members, looking at every single position in the town of Plymouth because there are positions that should have been funded a long time ago that were never presented to us, like an electrician, probably needed one five, 10 years ago. And there are other positions that maybe are not as urgent, that we are paying for right now. And I think that as we go along, we need to be looking at every single position in this town and say, is this, are we getting our money's worth? Is this a valuable position in terms of all the expenses we have or is this a lesser priority? Because I think we can't keep adding additional personnel and adding taxes. If my taxes go up $250 a year for the next four years, it's going to be $1,000 more dollars on my taxes, on my tax bill in four years. That's a lot of money for many people in this town. So I think we need to, I will vote for adding this personnel, but I think we need to be coming back to the next spring town meeting with a reduction in personnel. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? If not, we'll be taking a vote. And again, just to clarify, this is a vote to decrease or not add based on the main motion from the Advisory and Finance Committee. So it's a motion to decrease by 52,0818.
Just doing preventative amendments.
Do we have any further questions? If not, this is going to be a roll call vote and so we're going to take it as a roll call since there is some disagreement on this. So on item 9, when the light goes on, you'll be voting on whether to decrease by 52,0818 on the motion to amend. It's a majority vote. We're waiting for the light to go on. And when it goes on, you'll be voting on line item 9. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. The light is on. You can begin voting. We have 135 elected town meeting members who are currently voting. We're 10 seconds into the voting. We have some members still voting. As we continue with the voting, we're down to completing the voting with 113, 115, and the motion to amend failed. We will now go to line item 10, which is also a motion to decrease by 30,000. This is also a roll call vote and currently we're looking, yes?
My vote was not recorded.
Okay. And your name?
Gideon Strayer, Precinct 5.
Gideon Strayer, and you're in Precinct 5. And how did you vote?
Yes.
You voted yes. Thank you. That would mean 50 voting yes. Okay. 50, 65, 1. The motion to amend does not- The motion to amend does not carry for line item nine. And we've gone through the precincts, and now we see 13, 14, and 15. And once we clear the screen, we're going to go to item 10, which is also a motion to amend the main motion. It is to decrease by 30,000. A yes vote would be to decrease, amend, and not fund the position. Well, now, when the light goes on, you can begin voting on the motion to amend on item 10. We're waiting for the light to go on. You can now vote. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. This is a roll call vote, and you'll see the time. You'll also see the town meeting members that are voting with the tabulation in the corner of the screen. This is the annual town meeting now coming to you from Plymouth North High School. We've completed with 115, 16 members, and this passes. 58 voting in favor, 55 in opposition, three abstentions. So line item 10 passes. There's a decrease of 30,000. We therefore now continue the discussion on Subcommittee Report A as amended by item 10. We're now going to go to item, line item 5, Catherine Holmes, Precinct 8. If you'd like to come forward, she moves to decrease by 72,523, the amount appropriated for the Human Resources Department Personal Services. It's line item 5 for a total of 245,872. This is also a majority vote, and a roll call if it is not unanimous.
Hello, I'm Catherine Holmes, Precinct 8 Chair. When looking through the spring budget, there were a number of new staff positions being requested. And if it was not for the FinCom meeting minutes that I found really helpful, they would not have been as readily apparent when reviewing the budget. I think this needs to change, and that's why I talked to Lynn about adding slides to really call out exactly what the new resources were. And I think going forward, I'd like to see in the future, new staff positions being separated from articles so that they can be discussed and debated individually. With that said, I propose this motion to give us an opportunity to examine one of these new staff positions, which is the Assistant Director of Human Resources. I'd like to discuss the requirement and the job description, and ultimately, if we can afford to hire this position at this time. Is it absolutely necessary? And so when we, in the town of Plymouth, when we look at what's happening, we are in a state of what I would refer to as a perfect storm brewing in regards to our financial situation. There are many funding demands on the town that are really important and we absolutely must support, from developing a sound sewage management program, paying for our maintenance of our existing buildings, the cost of which is not yet known because the audit is not in yet. We have a growing school budget to meet the needs of our children, all further complicated by a significantly underfunded pension plan and a revenue loss from a power plant closing in June. Now, I believe it's time that we pause and seriously analyze every new spending request, especially in regards to adding additional headcount. Today, from what I understand, there are two separate HR departments. And Lynn actually went through a lot of that. There's one for the town and one for the school. Now, when you look at the current HR department that's in the town of Plymouth, we have three existing resources. We already have a director who makes $105,602 a year. We have a benefits administrator that makes $72,231 a year, and we have an administrative assistant that supports that department at $55,126 a year. So from looking at the job rec and the job descriptions that I received, this new Assistant Director would be responsible for all aspects of new hiring and developing training programs specifically for the new OSHA requirements. It would require creation of operations manuals, training plans, reporting, and ensuring adherence to these new regulations. They are expected to do all of this work in 37.5 hours a week. For this new role, for the 37.5 hours a week, they will have a salary of $72,523 a year. Now, talking to Lynn, she advised that we should add an additional approximate 35% to that to account for their benefits. So the cost to the taxpayer will be about $98,000 a year, and that's for this one specific resource. So it's important to really look at that. So in a 10-year period, this one specific resource is going to cost taxpayers approximately a million dollars. And in a 20-year period, that person will cost the taxpayers $2 million. Now, depending on the age of the person that we hire, they could actually then qualify for retirement, which would then go into the benefits plan. So I believe that we should reevaluate the training program completely and outsource this to one of the hundreds of private businesses that manage these for large organizations and government agencies across our nation. There are not, they are not only the experts in training, such as OSHA, data privacy, sexual harassment, cybersecurity, and workplace safety programs. It also includes gun violence and active shooter situations. They have an extensive knowledge base to pull from. They will then develop the operations manuals. They provide online and/or instructor-led training to maintain accurate reporting to ensure compliance, which in situations of litigation is extremely important to ensure that you've actually provided the training for these folks. They train the managers, and the managers of each department is responsible for ensuring the compliance. This takes the burden off the HR department, and it allows them to look at more pressing issues and completely eliminates the need for this role. So the taxpayer, most importantly, is, as we've discussed, no longer able to sustain the constant tax increases, and we must look at new technology and to assist the town of Plymouth in streamlining our processes and procedures to advance us into the future. So the Director of Center for Active Living, if you haven't seen the presentation done by the Board of Selectmen, Jennifer Young did, she talked about the growing number of our seniors, many of them already depending on meals on wheels to feed themselves. We must ask ourselves, if that is the case now, how are they going to continue to sustain annual increases in their property taxes? By rejecting this position, we will take a small step forward, maintaining a budget that Plymouth residents can afford. This is an opportunity to challenge us all and to reevaluate how we will meet the needs of, I just kind of have 10 seconds.
How much more time do you need?
10 seconds.
Okay.
One minute.
Yeah.
There are no objections. We'll let her continue.
So this is an opportunity to challenge us all to reevaluate how we will meet the needs of the HR team and contain the budget growth while looking for alternative options on how the work can be done. At the very least, we should be looking at a contract, part-time position, something temporary, but we simply cannot afford to do this at this time. Thank you for listening to me.
Paul Cunningham, continuing on the debate for line item 5 of Subcommittee Report A under Article 7.
Paul Cunningham, Precinct 8. I'd like to support the previous statement about the use of consultants and specialists instead of a full-time employee. As someone who was a consultant for 16 years in another industry, telecommunications, the benefits of using a specialist for a brief period of time has been very successful for decades. In this case, one brings in a knowledgeable person or a company in human resources who's shown a track record of successful consulting to firms, municipalities, over and over, to come in with the knowledge of the industry and examine how you're providing these services in your print, record-keeping, in person, and how you handle certain instances that cropped up. These people have been in 30 or 40 municipalities. There are a like number of corporate offices they've been in, and they bring the experience, it's not like it's all generated in their head, they bring the experience of what they've found in other firms, how they covered the subjects to date, and they point out better ways of doing things, record-keeping, and also present the subjects in depth, in depth with numerous meetings with your departments and your staff, and they can handle any question that may arise. So they work with you to improve the written record and lead in department meetings with your own HR staff, so that no, so they're basically training the trainer. This allows the client, the town in this case, to be able to put on presentations on their own. They complete the job for a fixed cost, 90 days, six months, whatever it is, and move on. But they're available to be called if there's a change in benefits or a major legal ruling. When there is a major change, you can bet that they will call you to let you know, hoping to get hired again, and to actually help themselves that way, too. But this replaces that $10 million that we spent for the employee and the $10 million that keeps going on and on every 10 years. As we get close to a Prop 2 and 1/2, as we just heard, override, let's try a new way of controlling costs and vote to eliminate this $98,000 higher. Thank you.
Patricia McCarthy.
In page 76 of your Finance Committee Report and Recommendations, it outlines that this department has not, I'm voting against this amendment, that this department has not had an increase in personnel in 24 years, and the town has certainly grown a lot in those 24 years, and the services and the needs, and what needs to be done to meet standards. And I think this is a good use of taxpayers' dollars, move forward, and to fulfill the necessary OSHA requirements and needs. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend line item 5 of Subcommittee Report A. Hearing none, we're going to take an electronic roll call vote. When the light goes on, you'll be voting. It's a majority vote. It's whether to decrease line item 5. When the light goes on, a decrease by 72,523. The light is on. Please vote. We have 135 elected town meeting members who are voting. There's a 20-second period in which to vote. We're 10 seconds in. We have town meeting members voting. The number on the bottom shows how many have voted. We have 116 of, 117 voting of the 135, and this passes. And therefore, we are now watching the 85 voting in favor, 32 in opposition, zero abstentions, so the motion passes. That further reduces the amount under Article 7A, Subcommittee Report. I previously had a number of $13,017,017. I'll need the new number that is being calculated for the main motion as amended. You'll see as we go through the precincts, we have precincts 7, 8, and 9. We're continuing through the precincts 10, 11, and 12, and we're finishing with 13, 14, and 15. We now continue the debate under Subcommittee Report A. No, you have a different number? All right, well, that's the Director of Finance. Which number? Further discussion under Subcommittee A. If not, we'll take a vote. If it's not unanimous, we'll do a roll call vote. Yes, please come forward. Richard Caproni, you have a question for the discussion under Article 7A, Subcommittee Report A. We will be voting the main motion under this as amended by the votes that we've had. Mr. Caproni.
I don't know what we're voting on. Would somebody stand up and tell us what we're voting on?
Well, I will tell you again. You have originally a motion from the Advisory and Finance Committee. It was in the amount of $13,47,117. We then had three votes to amend. The first vote failed, so we did not decrease by 52,000, as shown in your book. The second and third vote passed. Therefore, we reduced by 30,000 line item 10. We reduced item 5 by 72,523. And because we have reduced the main motion under this section, we're now voting as amended, Further questions before we vote? If we don't have any further questions, yes, we do have another question. Please come forward. Tom Pinto, we're debating Subcommittee Report A. Mr. Pinto?
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question about, under Subcommittee A, Town Manager Report. Is that, is that legal? In the big book here, the last line says, "An increase in Town Manager Buyback Benefit Budget is $27,000, an increase from FY '15 when it was $9." I was just wondering, does that number represent the entire personnel, full-time personnel, or whatnot? Just a clarifying question.
So a question of Mr. Pinto regarding the budget. We have Lynn Barrett, who is the Director of Finance, who will be responding.
Can you tell me what page?
It's page 74, under Budget Observations. Last sentence.
Oh, that, you're in the Subcommittee Report.
Sorry, the big one.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know if that was a, like a budget line?
Basically, the, it's the Town Manager's contract. Within her contract, she has certain provisions for buyback of earned time and LTIA, so that's what the budget is for.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Further discussion? If not, I'll first take a voice vote on the main motion as amended. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now go to Subcommittee Report B. Mr. Salerno moves to appropriate $74,625,371. Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of 12-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report B.
This includes, as you see, items 13 through 25. Any further discussion on Subcommittee Report B? If not, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Motion carries unanimously. And we now move to Subcommittee Report C, and we have a motion, Mr. Salerno, to appropriate Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of 12-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget with a net increase of $2,500 as detailed in Subcommittee Report C. The committee felt compelled to restore the $2,500 to personnel expenses for taking on the added responsibility for animal inspections, a duty removed from the Board of Health and added to natural resources, as well as other additional duties. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend line item 34. Alan Costello moves to decrease by 34,000 the amount appropriated for the Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs. Mr. Costello.
Alan Costello, Precinct 10. Yes, I put a motion in to decrease the Harbor Masters budget by $34,000. This represents new initiatives, three new positions, seasonal positions, so they're not big-money positions, but they're going to be used for an initiative to run a launch service. The launch service, as we've seen today in some of these articles, is not very well-defined in the article, and it may not even be needed. I don't believe the town should get into the private sector business of running a launch within Plymouth Harbor. So I would ask at this time that, to follow the recent trend here, is to back this $34,000 out of the Harbor Masters budget at this time. Thank you.
Further discussion on line item 34, motion to decrease by 34,000. Yes, Chad Hunter, Harbor Master.
So just to give a little description as to what this line item is for, as Mr. Costello had mentioned, it's for launch services. So we had an issue in the fall where there's two launch services in Plymouth Harbor. There's the Yacht Club, which you have to be a member of the Yacht Club to use their launch service, and then there's Lightning Launch, which is a public launch. The only other way for people to get back and forth to their boats are by skiffs that are tied to some of the town floats. In the fall, the launch service stopped. We still had people out on the moorings with their boats. They had no way of getting back and forth. We had people get stuck on their boats. We had people that were trying to get their boats off the mooring for the season, and the Harbor Master Department had to provide rides to them in our patrol boats, which is not a good situation. But at that time, we had to do what we had to do. Understanding that the potential of a public launch not running, people looked to us for guidance, the town, essentially. So we started working on a proposal to have a public launch if needed. Now, the launch itself and the Now, the launch itself and the cost built into the budget was being offset by the cost actually collected on the launch service. So we were going to charge the boaters $400 a year to use this launch service to recoup the money that we're spending to provide it. Mr. Costello has spoken out at, I believe, the Board of Selectmen's meeting, Harbor Committee, and Paul Quintle also has spoken against this. They just don't feel the town should get involved. But the one issue was, what do we do? That's not a solution. So this was a solution. Now, since then, it's been in the paper quite a bit. The current owner of the Lightning Launch has said that he's not going to run the launch for 2019, and we've had only one other private launch come to us and show some interest. Not a guarantee, though. So the question is, for the town to be in a position, now granted, we're already sort of behind at this point. I don't know if the launch service will be available if we decide to pursue this in May or May 15th, which is what we were proposing. But it also gives us an option, if the public launch fails, to pursue that. It might not happen, you know, this year, I don't know. But when we get into spring 2020, if there's no private launch, then we still need to be able to act. So I would recommend to leave this line item here because it gives us an option. If we don't pursue a launch, we're not going to spend this, and it'll be returned to the town at the end of the year. But we're unable to make moves that quick, and we have to plan ahead, a year ahead essentially. So this gives us an option if the public launch does not operate, if nobody fills those shoes, and we're stuck providing that service.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? If not, we're going to take an electronic vote on the motion to amend. Actually, I'll take a voice vote first. A voice vote on whether to amend to decrease by 34,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
Does not carry, but will take a vote since it is a roll call vote. So we're waiting for the light to go on so we get the actual numbers. And this is to record a roll call vote on the motion to amend. You're now voting on the motion to amend line item 34, a decrease by 34,000. 135 town meeting members elected, town meeting members present and voting. We see 115, 117, as the time ticks down, 118 have voted, and we do see that it did fail. And we're going through the precincts one through three. 29 having voted in favor, 87 in opposition, two abstentions. The motion does not carry as we scroll through the precincts. Catherine Holmes, I understand that you've withdrawn your motion to amend item 34. Is that correct?
That was never my motion. It was a mistake.
Thank you. And further discussion then on the main motion, which has not been amended. So we still have the motion, 26,881,303. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll first call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
Mr. Moderator, you did not see my name up there on my vote. I'm not sure what I voted.
All right, Mr. Caproni. Again, what precinct are you in? 15.
We don't know what precinct.
Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
It was or wasn't.
He doesn't know. He said he didn't see it. He said, could you just play precincts 13, 14, and 15 one more time so that Mr. Caproni can determine whether or not his vote was accurately recorded? So you'll see as we scroll through the precincts, we're going to show each of the precincts. And town meeting members, for those of you who are watching, check to make sure that their vote is properly recorded. And we're now at 15, and Mr. Caproni, your vote is a yes, and that's consistent with your vote. Okay. One more time so there's no confusion. Subcommittee Report C, we're going to take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
All right, we'll have the noes please stand and be identified. Everett Malaguti is a no.
Strier, Precinct 11.
Mr. Strier is a no.
Precinct 1.
And Precinct 1, he's a no. And?
Frank O'Brien, Precinct 11.
Frank O'Brien, Precinct 11 are nos. Those are our nos for Subcommittee Report C. And at this time, we continue with Subcommittee Report D. Mr. Salerno moves town vote to appropriate 10,109,148. Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of 12,000, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget with a net increase of $48,689 as detailed in Subcommittee Report D. The Finance Committee is painfully aware of the ongoing struggle with maintenance of town properties. A persuasive case was made to the Subcommittee for adding an electrician to the building maintenance team. This recommendation was accepted by the full committee.
We have a motion to amend by Mr. Tavares, moves to amend the motion under Article 7A Subcommittee Report D to decrease by 55,689, the amount appropriated for Department of Public Works, line item 37. Anyone here to be heard on the motion to amend to decrease? First, anybody speaking on behalf of the motion to decrease made by Mr. Tavares? Melissa Origi, Town Manager.
Again, the Selectmen debated about the potential of adding this new position, but I think a couple of things really came into their decision not to pursue it. One, they didn't think the funding was adequate. I'm not sure that you would be able to get somebody into a full-time position for this funding amount. In addition, this is something that we outsource currently. Often, the facilities manager has to bring in resources from the outside, and the board didn't show any opposition to continuing to do that.
Patricia McCarthy.
Voting against this amendment to decrease. I think it's time for us to catch up with our building maintenance program and having an electrician that we can count on being there. It brings us more in line with, as the school department has taken care of their buildings, that we have somebody full-time for our needs. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Line item 37 of Subcommittee Report D. Kevin Joyce, Precinct 15, welcome.
Thank you. I wonder if the DPW Director could weigh on this.
Request as to whether or not the Department of Public Works wishes to speak on this motion to amend to decrease the amount appropriated for the department.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, no, just going to support what the Town Manager said in the Board of Selectmen's position as far as the electrical position. And I've talked with Wayne Walkden again, you know, you look at what we have for electrical needs, you know, it's our position at this time where we really want to finish the due solutions, the assessment of all the buildings, and see where we stand in terms of overall needs and maintenance, and really come up with that programmatic approach to justify the position at this time. Thank you.
So you are in favor of decreasing?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Yes, Nate Segal.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Beeter, but actually, would you be able to just expand on the ongoing assessment that you mentioned, just to give us a little bit of background about what that is, when it's expected to be completed? Thanks.
Jonathan Beeter is the Director of the Department of Public Works, further responding.
Yeah, so the fall town meeting provided some funding, and we received from grants through Meyer, our insurance carrier, where a company's coming in and they're going to really expand on that 2014 EMG report everybody hears about. So they'll use that as the foundation, if you would. And the new software will really provide us with a work order system and really update those assessments to provide, you know, capital repairs, and we can program that in terms of priority and what those details are, and we expect to bring that back to this body at some point in time. In terms of the actual inspections and where we are with the company, I think that's ongoing, and probably in another three to six months, we will have that information. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll first take a voice vote on the motion to amend item 37. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
I'll take, I'll ask the noes to please stand to be recognized. I see Patricia McCarthy is a no, and John Sullivan is a no, Ed Conroy is a no, Richard Cirque is a no, Michael Hanlon is a no, David Peck is a no. David Peck, Everett Malaguti. And back, is that Bill Kohane? Yes.
Wait a minute, who was that?
Bill Kohane.
King Fisher.
Kohane. Is King Fisher? And over here, yes.
King Fisher.
King Fisher, yes.
And then, King Fisher and then Patino Lane.
Patino Lane, yes. And Mr. Costello? Thank you. Brenda Bradley, are you standing as a no? Or are you a yes? Here are yes. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Another no.
Another no, I'm sorry, yes.
Stacy Bellinger, Precinct 17.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay. And now we have another motion to amend. Line item 38 of Subcommittee Report D. Dale Weber, Precinct 3, moves to amend the motion made under Article 7A Subcommittee Report D by Mr. Salerno as follows, decrease by 55,000 the amount appropriated for Department of Public Works, all divisions, all other. And it's for a total, leaving a total of $1,914,220. Mr. Weber on your motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dale Weber, Precinct 3. I rise today as a taxpayer, as a ratepayer, and a town meeting representative from Precinct 3, as well as an employee representative. I'm speaking to you today to ask you to support my amendment to delete a total of $55,000 in this budget, $25,000 in the cemetery new initiative to outsource raking of leaves, which I consider to be one of the most basic of operations that public employees can certainly handle. I'm also rising here today to speak about the $30,000 in tree trimming in the Forestry Department, another function which is a function that we are certainly set up to do based on equipment. And the bottom line is, when we compare what municipal workers do and the salary that municipal workers are paid to do that task to what you would have to pay to a prevailing wage rate contractor if you voted not to support my amendment, that will toll into thousands and thousands of dollars on this particular job. I also want to say that I normally wouldn't be speaking about an issue like this in this forum, but because the administration circumvented the collective bargaining laws of the Commonwealth where those discussions should take place, I'm forced to speak about it, only to urge you to not support it in order to save the expense of unnecessary litigation if discussions had happened prior to this initiative of seeking to outsource traditional work that has historically been completed in the DPW. I think what's the grave situation here, and not to use a pun for the cemetery, but the bottom line is, our laborers who do this work in the cemetery, our laborers earn $19 an hour, actually, under $19 an hour, with benefits, as Ms. Barrett has indicated, that can add 35% to that number, so it brings it up to around $25 an hour that you'd be paying to have the laborers rake leaves in the cemetery as they have done for the past 40 years. If you were to outsource this and vote against my amendment, you would be paying $56.88 under the prevailing wage laws to have an outside contract to come in and do work of the town's DPW. In the tree department, for the tree trimming initiative, that number escalates up to, we're currently paying $30 an hour for our aerial lift operators that work in the aerial bucket and the cherry picker. We're paying our people $30 an hour with benefits, and to prevailing wage rate that out to the industry, you would have to pay $75.83 an hour for that same job. I've constantly stood up in public forums and advocated for town employees to do the work that they're qualified to do and that they're equipped to do. So just to give you a quick synopsis there, the work for the forestry department under this new initiative is $30,000 for 10 days worth of work, which breaks down to $375 an hour. For our people to do this work, it would be $112.90 an hour on straight time. If you were to get into the concept of saying, I'm assuming someone from management is going to pop up after me and say that, well, our people are busy over here and they can't do this over here. If that's the case, then we kick into overtime, where our people can certainly bid on an overtime assignment to do that work. And in that case, our people with the same manpower, the same equipment.
30 seconds.
They would come in at $169.35 an hour. So the bottom line is, this is a bargaining unit work. We'd like to see it continue. You can save $55,000 by turning down this new initiative. I urge you to do so. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? I see Michael Hanlon rising to come forward. Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I respect Mr. Weber's opinion, but I don't think he's correct. Well, he's actually correct about one thing that he mentioned, and that's the prevailing wage law. We should be outraged by the prevailing wage law, and it should be repealed, but that's a State House issue, not a Plymouth Town Meeting issue. We need to give the Public Works guys the ability to make management decisions that they think are best for the town, and that's what they're going to do. They're proposing to outsource this work. They ought to have the ability to do that if they think that's in the best interest of the town. So I hope you vote no on this amendment.
Everett Malaguti, we're debating the motion to amend.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct 1. I support Dale Weber's motion to amend, as I believe, as I stated during our caucus, that if we have seasonal laborers for these departments, that why don't we just have these seasonal laborers start earlier in the year that would still do the due diligence that needed to have it prepared for Memorial Day and then have it cleaned up before wintertime? If we want to have it done, why not start with what we already have in-house already and then work from that? Thank you.
Further discussion on this motion to amend? Amy Hine, followed by David Peck. Amy Hine.
Amy Hine, Precinct 14. Can we hear from the DPW why they want to outsource?
Someone here to respond? Jonathan Beeter, Director, Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So there's really two issues here. One is the cemetery maintenance piece, in which our original request was 50,000 to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Advisory and Finance Committee reduced that down to 25,000. So, and then the other piece is the forestry maintenance piece, which was a $30,000 request, which was as recommended by the Finance Committee. We are not questioning the qualification or the equipment we have in-house. Our staff does a fantastic job. What it comes down to is our ability to keep up, the day-to-day work, the demands. You know, after last year and the storms we had with Riley in March, we had a really hard time cleaning up your cemeteries. We have seven active cemeteries, 35 overall, over 90 acres. We have a staff of six employees. We're having a very hard, difficult time catching up, and a lot of it's timing. And then you go on the tree side, the forestry maintenance piece, that's a seasonal thing for us before the winter. We need to do what's called elevating your trees. We have 380 miles of road, which Lynn presented a while ago. We have five employees on the tree crew. We offer a tremendous amount of overtime with our staff. And again, with the trees, it becomes a liability. We have a very difficult time keeping up. The trees are overgrown. We get a lot of calls for cutbacks where residents can't see out. Those 10 days would be such a great asset for us, for you, in terms of controlling the growth on your roads. And then the cemeteries, it's not just leave pickup. It's really a spring cleaning, where we can go in and get a great jump stop on your cemeteries, so we, Board of Selectmen, Town Manager's Office, aren't getting the calls from you people saying, hey, your cemeteries are a mess. How come there's debris on my plot or my neighbor's plot? We see that as a problem. We're trying to address that with these two proposals, and I ask that you support them. Thank you.
David Peck on Mr. Weber's motion to amend. David Peck.
David Peck.
David Peck, Precinct Four. I'll be back, depending on how this goes. I'm going to recommend voting against this particular motion because I think, in particular, the cemeteries, but the DPW on both trees and cemeteries is underfunded and needs more to pay attention to cemeteries and trees, in particular, to Burial Hill. So I'm going to vote against this and then return with particular attention to Burial Hill. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Betsy Hall on the motion to amend. Thank you.
I would like someone from the town to address what I think I heard Mr. Weber say about collective bargaining and future litigation.
Anyone here to respond? Marlene McCollum is our Assistant Town Manager, and she'll respond as to that question.
Thank you. We do have an obligation, which we have every intention fulfilling, to impact bargain this if it's funded and if and when we actually do go out to procure these services. There's no obligation to impact bargain the budget request. So it'd be premature to bargain that until we know if you're going to vote for it and until we know when we would be looking to procure the services.
Dale Weber? We're debating your motion to amend, Mr. Weber.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. To address Betsy's question, I'm not going to get into the legality of here, but I disagree with the opinion that was just given because the laws of the Commonwealth under Mass General Laws, Chapter one fifty E, prevent a chilling effect to be instilled by an attempt to bypass internal discussions with the exclusive bargaining representative and instead going directly to this forum to raise money. We know what the spirit and intent of the town management team is. It's to replace bargain unit work. And we can't stand idly by without a forum to discuss that. I won't do that here. I'm just urging you to vote for my amendment so that it prevents that litigation from having to proceed. The other issue is, very quickly, this body has been very good to the POCs and DPW divisions in appropriating equipment for our people to do this work. Just last year, you spent over eight thousand dollars in custom aluminum slide-in bodies for our dump trucks so that the new twenty-eight horsepower tow behind vacuum can suck leaves into the trucks and dispose of it and make it an efficient operation. Over a dozen modern and efficient backpack leaf blowers and probably thirty hand rakes to do this work. In our tree department, we have state-of-the-art technology, aerial lift trucks, chainsaws, wood chippers. And we just recently hired a very qualified arborist and tree climber in a position that was vacant for over a year. We're still short a position in the cemetery that hasn't been filled for a year. And I can go on and on here to talk about why the town is not able to attract and retain employees. I won't bore you with that. But the bottom line is, the need exists so that instead of Mr. Hanlon's recommendation to abolish the prevailing wage law, the recommendation should be to bring municipal employees up in their salaries so that they can compete to those wages that are established on the State House floor. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, I'm going to call for a vote. I am first going to do a voice vote. And this is the motion to decrease by fifty-five thousand. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
We'll take electronic voting. When the light goes on, please vote. Light is on. You have twenty seconds in which to vote. We have one hundred and thirty-five elected town E members. Those who are present in voting are shown at the bottom of the screen. And we have five seconds left to vote. And the vote will soon be shown as to whether or not this motion, it does pass. You'll see sixty-six in favor, fifty-one in opposition. It does pass, and therefore it will decrease. You're showing the precincts. Look at your precinct to see if your vote was correctly tabulated. And while you are looking at that, I just want to draw to your attention that we had motions printed in the alternative by Mr. Peck. And now that we've gone through all the precincts, Mr. Peck moves to amend line item thirty-eight of Subcommittee Report D. And he does so as follows. He moves to increase by fifty thousand the amount appropriate for the Department of Public Works, all divisions. David Peck on your motion to amend.
Thank you. David Peck, Precinct Four. When I was reviewing the package, you know, several weeks ago, I noticed that the Selectmen had recommended for the cemetery division four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Then FinCom took twenty-five, or is recommending removing twenty-five thousand dollars from that. That troubled me. And then the Old Colony Memorial article, just within the last week, pointed out the dreadful condition of Burial Hill in particular, and perhaps our other cemeteries. But Burial Hill, I walk through probably five times a week. And the cemeteries need cleaning, graffiti control, walkway repair, stair repair. Basically, they are months, years behind proper maintenance. And in particular, I love Burial Hill, but the entire cemetery division, I am recommending restoring the twenty-five thousand dollars removed by FinCom and the twenty-five thousand dollars you just removed in Dale's thing and restore the cemetery budget to the original Selectmen amount. So that is my motion, an addition of fifty thousand dollars. It's a restoration of fifty thousand dollars.
This is a majority vote. It's not going to be a roll call. I've been taking roll call in a few of these line item adjustments, but I charter it really doesn't require it. So unless I'm in doubt, I'm not going to be doing roll calls. Further discussion on Mr. Peck's motion to amend? We do have Ms. Curtin rising to the occasion to speak on this. Donna Curtin, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Donna Curtin, Precinct Three. I'm going to support David Peck's motion. I think this is a really important time. I imagine many of you, like I, were really shocked at Emily Clark's, Emily Wilcox's article in the Old Colony Memorial, really exposing what's happened to one of our most important historical resources, which is Burial Hill. Next year, we're celebrating our four-hundredth anniversary. I think it's in shameful condition. We need to do something about this, giving back fifty thousand dollars to do things. And it may include something as simple as raking leaves. With all due respect for my colleague Dale Weber, whose knowledge and experience I have a great regard for, I think in a historic space like that, all of this, you know, wonderful, modern equipment doesn't always work. You need more hands working around very careful and fragile historical materials. That takes people power. It's very clear for anyone who cares about our cemeteries as historic places, we are not keeping pace with the staff and the resources that we have. I strongly recommend restoring fifty thousand dollars so that we can be, take pride in some of the resources that we have in less than a year's time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion on this motion to amend? Dale Weber, speaking on David Peck's motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dale Weber, Precinct Three. Clarification. We have five cemetery employees that do the necessary work in our active cemeteries. I want to clarify that because Mr. Peck's motion speaks to Burial Hill, which is a non-active cemetery. We are not regularly assigned to perform work duties in Burial Hill. It is a historical cemetery. And unlike the other cemeteries, it has had a lot of financial help in the last years by the Friends of the Burial Hill and some other fundraising initiatives that should have produced results. But it's a very slow process. And again, it's more of restoration at Burial Hill than it is active and ongoing work. People are dying to get into cemeteries, old joke. Bottom line is, not Burial Hill. Thank you.
Robert Spencer. We're debating a motion to amend.
Robert Spencer, Precinct One. Like I've been telling you, this town here did not maintain a thing in this town. Nobody is held accountable for absolutely nothing. The Selectmen, all your department, nobody is accountable. Now, they know that sixteen-twenty is coming. That Burial Hill, like they say, it is a disgrace. And they, for the past year and a half, it had to be like that then, and the town does nothing about it. Thank you.
Further discussion on David Peck's motion to amend to increase by fifty thousand? Any, yes, please come forward, Mr. Hammond. John Hammond rises to speak in connection with the David Peck's motion to amend. And we are on the annual town meeting, and we are on Article seven. John Hammond, good afternoon.
Well, I have a question I didn't have until a couple of minutes ago. But if Mr. Peck is trying to get more money for Burial Hill and the employees would not be working at Burial Hill, that confuses me. I want, so my question is, if we do keep fifty-five thousand dollars available, is that going to be spent, any of it, on Burial Hill? Or is it all for the active cemeteries? Thank you.
Fifty thousand dollars. Jonathan Beeter responding as the Director of the Department of Public Works on the motion to amend. Mr. Beeter.
So just point of clarification. We have six employees in your cemetery division. One position is vacant, but we're looking to fill that. You have thirty-five cemeteries totaling ninety acres. Seven of them are active. Thirty-five cemeteries, seven active cemeteries, six total employees, one leaf box. This fifty thousand dollars will allow us to do an annual cleanup. Multiple cemeteries, you'd have to put out an RFP and bid that. And again, what that would allow us to do is those six employees in the cemetery division will allow them to get a better handle on the other type of work. Painting, some of the more detailed fence repair, some of the things they're having a very hard time to get to because they're always doing more maintenance things in terms of grass cutting, weed whacking, and leaf raking. Again, this would really be a supplement to them, and I ask that you support it. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? I see we have another speaker coming before us. Thank you.
Teresa Kreiter, Precinct Nine. I'm going to vote against the amendment just because I don't think it meets the intended purpose of the, of what the speaker intended. Namely, that, as a previous speaker said, that the monies would not go to the restoration of Burial Hill as outlined in the Old Colony Memorial. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like at this point that's been made clear, that if we did amend the additional money, that that would go to general maintenance and not to the restoration of Burial Hill.
Further discussion? Donna Curtin? We're debating a motion to amend.
Donna Curtin, Precinct Three. I think maintaining these spaces is absolutely legitimate in when we think of condition and what our experience is in visiting these sites. So I've noticed myself in recent years, what I would see is the declining ability of the town to take care of things after a storm, after the seasonal changes, keeping up with removing leaves and material. And I think that does accumulate and create damage to these spaces as they're buried under the accumulation of dirt and leaf debris. So it's not necessarily that this money would be used for the restoration of stones or of other physical aspects, but that regular and ongoing maintenance that makes a site appear well-tended and have the benefit of being well-tended, I think, is absolutely the intent of Mr. Peck's motion, unless he would speak otherwise to that. But and I think that's quite legitimate. I do, would add, I think it would probably be a good idea to, number one, see more forward progress on the funding that has been assigned to Burial Hill for conservation and restoration work and to consider additional needs in that area as well. But I don't think that's to the moment. Thank you.
Matthew Tavares.
Matt Tavares, Precinct Four. I guess, I don't know if I'm the only one, but I'm still confused as to what aspect we're totally debating here, whether we're talking about active maintenance, which is what I think I'm hearing, and, or excuse me, maintenance in active graveyards as opposed to Burial Hill. Is there actually active maintenance that happens within Burial Hill that's part of the DPW?
I won't speak for Mr. Beeter, but, you know, Burial Hill is a responsibility of the DPW. They are responsible for it. So Mr. Weber pointed out, it's not an active one, but it still needs attention. My motion was to restore up to the Selectmen's original recommended budget. My lead driver is Burial Hill, but I want to provide the flexibility to the DPW to pay attention to their cemeteries across their responsibility. But Burial Hill needs attention. Probably needs a lot more than twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand. So I want to give them the flexibility, but I want to restore it. Without the fifty thousand, there'll be even less attention to Burial Hill. So I urge everyone to support this amendment.
Yes.
I guess my, kind of a follow-up question to that is where's the priority level placed upon the cemeteries, whether it's the active over, say, a historical site?
Jonathan Beeter is the Director of the Department of Public Works.
So the Public Works Department does maintain Burial Hill as part of those thirty-five cemeteries. And seven of them are active. We've kind of go over this a little bit. But again, we, this would provide us with that flexibility to bring in a company to address the seven actives so we have our staff that can handle all of them, depending on need, depending on storms, depending on use, depending on all those unforeseen issues that we're not aware of.
Mr. Neville, your procedural motion? Moves to close debate, is not debatable. Requires a two-thirds vote. We have at least one person standing who wishes to be heard. I'll now take a vote on whether to close debate. It'll be a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have now closed debate on Mr. Peck's motion to increase by fifty thousand. I will now take a voice vote on whether to approve the motion to amend to increase by fifty thousand. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I am in doubt. We'll do it electronically. Please get ready to vote. When the light goes on, you'll be voting on whether to, you'll be voting on this motion to amend for Mr. Peck to increase by fifty thousand. The light is on. Town E members are voting. We have one hundred and thirty-five elected. We have over a hundred voting at the present time. You'll see the time is moving down. And when we complete this, we'll then be looking for a new number to vote under this particular Subcommittee Report. This did fail. And you'll now see the precincts. Fifty-eight voting in favor. Fifty-eight in opposition. Zero abstentions. It's a tie, which means it fails. Please check your, please carefully check your vote to make sure it was properly recorded. We'll wait until the end of the screens. Nathan Siegel.
I was not recorded. I voted yes.
Mr. Siegel voted yes. You are not recorded. Anyone else whose vote was not recorded? Then the vote is fifty-nine in favor, fifty-eight in opposition. The motion carries. We now continue under Subcommittee Report D. Any further discussion? We now have a motion as amended, and we're waiting for that number. Once we complete it, we'll be moving on to the next Subcommittee Group. And we're having, on Article seven A Subcommittee Report D, we have a reduction, we had an increase. And we're looking to the Director of Finance for the number. Lynn Barrett is our Director of Finance. Do we agree? So we're looking, because we reduced it by fifty-five thousand, six eighty-nine, we increased it by fifty... So we're looking, because we reduced it by 55,000, 689, we increased it by 50,000. And that was a decrease of 55,000, 6...
I mean, a decrease of 5,000.
And then an increase of the... So just for those of you watching, we are continuing to debate Article 7A Subcommittee Report D. Mr. Barbieri, yes?
Mr. Moderator, yes. Richard Barbieri, Precinct Three. When I was watching the tallies from other precincts, I saw a blank, I think it was the Pat Nod vote. It was blank, and then all of a sudden it came up as a no, I believe. Now, was that vote, so is it back to 58 to 59? Or is it 59, 59? Could we have a tally from the, the computer people?
She, she's just indicated she changed her vote during the, during, so you changed it during the 20 seconds and the computer later...
I was very confused about that.
Please come forward, Ms. Pat Nod, Lane. So we might, we could have an explanation of this, but I assume that if it were changed during the 20 seconds, the computer readout may then follow the change in the delay. But if you want to explain your vote...
I tried to vote.
Please come to the microphone.
I was trying to support Mr. Weber, and then I changed my vote to support Mr. Peck. Now, I'm not quite sure which way I wanted to vote, because it came out 50, 50. That was a very confusing vote.
So this is a good, good discussion. We can't have people changing votes because of what they finally saw was the tally.
No, no, no. That's not when I changed my vote. I changed it during the voting.
Right.
That's why it went blank.
And so in that case, we're going with the vote that you changed to during the tally.
I'm not even sure which one that is.
Well, we're gonna...
I'm sorry. I don't know what I wanted to vote.
We're gonna follow...
Give me an abstain.
We're gonna follow the amount that was reported.
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, once, once, we're, we're told, once you, it was tallied, you, the vote didn't change.
Motion to reconsider, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Caproni, did you vote on the prevailing side?
You're asking me? You don't know?
No, Mr. Caproni. I'm asked, I always ask everyone if they voted on the prevailing side. So you voted a yes.
Yes.
For the motion to amend. And now you're voting, now you're moving to reconsider. And we do have that, as Mr. Caproni having voted yes. If, if we can just double-check that. But in the meantime, I'll entertain the motion to reconsider. Mr. Caproni, do you want to be heard on your motion to reconsider? You don't want to be heard on the motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider is a majority vote. It is made by someone who voted on the prevailing side. Am I to understand that Richard Caproni, Precinct 15, voted yes on that last motion? And here we go. We're showing the precincts for all of you. If you have any question about how you voted, they're being shown now. And we're coming to Precinct 15, and we see that Mr. Caproni voted yes. Further discussion on a motion to reconsider the motion to amend? If not, I'm going to call for a voice vote on whether to reconsider. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
I am in doubt. We will electronically vote whether to reconsider. Now, let me just say that because this was a very close vote, we could anticipate we might have a close vote on whether to reconsider. So you're voting now whether to reconsider Mr. Peck's motion to amend. When the light goes on, you'll be voting whether to reconsider. This is a majority vote when the light goes on. And you can all vote, yes, no, or abstain. Here we go, reconsidered. You've got your 20 seconds. We've got 135 elected town meeting members voting whether to reconsider the motion to amend by David Peck. Meanwhile, we're getting a final tally based on whether that is reconsidered or not. We're now finishing, and we have 100, and, and this passes, 65 to 50. So now we're, we've voted to reconsider David Peck's motion to amend, and we're now open for discussion. Would someone care to discuss and further deliberate on David Peck's motion to amend to increase by 50,000? And I see Mr. Pinto coming forward. Mr. Pinto, did you care to be heard on the motion to amend?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just think, maybe we could have some clarification. I believe when we supported Mr. Weber's vote, town meeting, we voted to eliminate the $25,000, therefore not outsource. The following vote for Mr. Peck, if we voted for it, we're voting then to bring the $50,000 back in and then outsource work. So yes vote on this upcoming one would be to then outsource work after we as town meeting, just the vote before voted to get rid of it. Am I correct?
Further, further questions?
I just wanna...
Thank you.
I just think we need maybe some clarification.
Brenda Bradley, you now get a chance to speak. Welcome.
And finally, Brenda Bradley, Precinct 11. It's 6:20 on a Friday night in August. Pilgrims' progress is starting to come down from burial hill. There's dozens of doors. The entire place is trashed with styrofoam containers. There were photographers. I'm running around picking up trash with my bare hands. The trash bins were overflowing. It was absolutely disgusting. I was embarrassed for Plymouth. I mean, here are these, you know, people are dressed in wool in 90-degree weather in August, and it was just a shame.
Charlotte Collins, please come to a microphone. Or are you having technical difficulty?
I'll say. But you said proceed.
All right, please speak to the technician that's available. Charlotte, there's a technician available to us and should be over there at the teller's table. Thank you. Michael Hanlon.
I think we should support this. I agree with David. I agree with Donna, all the comments and, and arguments that they made. In less than 12 months, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of people, are going to descend on Plymouth for the 20, excuse me, the 400th anniversary. This is, uh, this is one of our historical relics in this town. And whether it's an active cemetery or an inactive cemetery, it's a cemetery. It's got grass, trees, and headstones, just like every other cemetery. We need to take care of it. This is just like fixing the roof on a building. We need to clean it up and take care of it. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Amy Heine.
Amy Heine, Precinct 14. I think earlier we were just discussing that we don't want to add new employees, so outsourcing can be a good idea, contractors, whatever. So I think we should support this amendment. I think we need it.
Ken Howe, you have a motion?
Ken Howe, Precinct 11, remove that question.
Motion to close debate. Anyone else care to rise to be heard? If not, we're going to vote on whether to close debate on the motion to amend. It's a voice vote on whether to close debate. I'll now take the vote. All those in favor of closing debates say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. We have now closed debate. We will now take a vote on the motion to amend, and it's going to be done electronically. Get your voting equipment ready. And when the light goes on, you'll be voting whether to increase by 50,000 on the Department of Public Works. When the light goes on, this is the motion to amend. The time is now ticking. You can start the vote. Please turn on the light. But town meeting members, you can vote. The light is on. The seconds are ticking down. You have 10 seconds left. We have 135 elected. We have over 100 voting. 117 have voted up until this point. And at this time, we have a new vote on this, and it passes. And this time, it is 60 to 57 with zero abstentions. The motion passes. Please watch to make sure that your vote is correctly tabulated, since we do have another close vote by town meeting on this particular motion to amend. And we're now looking to the Department of Finance for the final amount as to what we are going to be voting under Subcommittee Report D as amended. $10,048,459 is the new amount under Subcommittee Report D, and I will now take a vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
The motion carries. I do not require a roll call on this. Yes. Charlotte Collins, how did you vote?
I voted yes.
She voted yes. That didn't come through. That increases on that previous motion. We're now going to go to Subcommittee E, but before we do that, our charter requires a recess every two hours. We're going to take a 30-second recess and try and finish, at least going, a one-minute recess. We're going to try to finish and get through this article. So take one minute to stretch, and we're going to resume momentarily. I asked, please resume your seats. Take your seats. We're going to continue, and we're going to try to get through this article today. And then I do have a motion to adjourn. Subcommittee Report E. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to appropriate $4,658,478. It's a majority vote, Mr. Salerno.
In unanimous vote of 12-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget as detailed in Subcommittee Report E.
I did receive another motion in writing that was not contained in your packet of materials. Everett Malaguti moves to amend this report, and he moves that Item 57 be increased by 20,000. Everett Malaguti on your motion to amend.
Everett Malaguti. So my motion to amend for the $20,000 increase on line 57 of the Department of Planning and Development, all of their expenses, to increase Patrick Ferrer's budget for the Energy Efficiency Officer, as the $30,000 that he receives annually to do efficiency approvals for the town, that has not changed in a number of years, is very insufficient to do, as most of the low-hanging fruit has already been done for the town. Increasing the budget to 50,000 allows him more flexibility to save taxpayers' money and bring more efficiency for the apparatuses that we have, thus saving more money than what we already are spending to supplement this budget.
Further discussion on the motion to amend Item 57 to increase by $20,000? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll first call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
Motion does not carry. Further discussion on Subcommittee Report E? Hearing none, I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Carries unanimously on Subcommittee Report E. And we now continue Subcommittee Report F. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to appropriate $100,538,964. Mr. Salerno.
In unanimous vote of 12-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget of $100,538,964 as detailed in Subcommittee Report F. Please note that the report of Subcommittee F is broken into three parts, the summaries of which are found on Pages 126, 129, and 130.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
The motion carries. And we will now continue with the next group of votes. This is now having to do with some of your sources. 7A1, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to transfer the sum of $783,333 from the Pavement Management Debt Fund. It's a two-thirds vote, Mr. Salerno. Mr. Salerno.
The motion 7A1 and 7A2 are summarizing the previous votes. They are divided into two components, as there is a different quantum of vote for the pavement management transfer.
Further discussion on the Article 7A, 7A1 vote to transfer the $783,333? If not, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. The second vote we have here under 7A2, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise, and we have the numbers contained here. Do we have any changes from the Department of Finance on any of the numbers contained in this vote based on the changes? We're looking, you'll see here that Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise $229,61,048 for a total general fund operating budget, Items 1 through 63, to provide for reserve fund and to fray the expense of the town. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $191,661 from the Title V Loan Program, transfer the sum of $11,177 from the State Boat Ramp Revolving Fund, transfer the sum of $32,496 from the Recreation Revolving Fund, transfer the sum of $11,462 from Memorial Hall Revolving Fund, transfer the sum of $10,154 from the Plymouth Beach Revolving Fund. And we continue. Transfer the sum of $5,0947 from Fire Safety and Prevention Revolving Fund, transfer the sum of $10,151 from the Fire Alarm Masterbox Services Revolving One, transfer the sum of $22,511 from Cemetery Perpetual Care, transfer the sum of $214,763 from Municipal Waterways, transfer the sum of $1,792,844 from the Meals Tax Fund, transfer the sum of $168,550 from premium from debt exclusion, further transfer the sum of $500,000 from the General Fund Free Cash to the OPEB Fund, and raise $226,893,322 from the 2020 tax levy. And the total amount in the first line has been changed to $229,681,229,681,169. And on the last line, your total is going to be $225,000, $225,926,120. Those numbers are pretty big for me. On this motion under 7A2, Mr. Neville, do you care to be heard?
I don't understand what's going on here, and I'll be shameless in admitting it. It would appear to be a variety of journal entries. And I'm wondering whether or not, maybe there's, maybe there's an explanation that I'm missing in another text, but it looks like we're making a stockpots soup here.
Well, as I understand it, this is a variation from what we've done in the past, and it's kind of a belt-and-suspender's approach. I did ask why we were voting what we've already voted. I've been, it's been explained to me that we wanted to be clear on funding sources, and I'm going to ask the Director of Finance to further respond to Mr. Neville's question. and I'm gonna ask the Director of Finance to further respond to Mr. Neville's question.
This information regarding transfers from other funds is voted in the motion every year when we vote the budget. This year, because we brought it up into the several different Subcommittee Reports, we appropriated all the money in the Subcommittee Reports, and then the last two articles to do the transfers is actually the funding sources for all of those appropriations. So you'll see that a lot of those transfers correspond to the numbers that you'll see under Other Available Funds on page fourteen of the Sources and Uses document in, it's actually on page fifteen of the Sources and Uses document. So it corresponds to how we budget every year. There's certain other available funds that we use to support the budget.
Further discussion on seven A two as read. Kevin Joyce, are you coming forward to speak? Thank you. We're in our Plymouth Annual Town Meeting, Article seven, Kevin Joyce.
Lynn, based on what you just said, I, if I'm not mistaken, that one million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and forty-four number from the Meals Tax is what we brought in last year, which will be applied towards the, the buy-down or the payoff of the Town Hall building. Is that correct?
Yes, the one million seven ninety-two eight forty-four is the principal and interest payment.
We're not doing too bad on Meals Tax, are we?
No.
Further discussion? If not, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, we don't, I'm gonna ask for the noes to stand. Okay, Everett Malaguti and Mr. Stryer. Anyone else? Thank you. We now move to Article seven B. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise and appropriate four million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand two twenty-one, which will be items sixty-four to sixty-seven, to defray water direct costs and transfer one million two hundred and eighty-three thousand twenty-six dollars for water indirect costs to the General Fund by raising six million two hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars of water receipts as detailed in the Advisory and Finance Subcommittee Report G and below. Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget for the Water Enterprise Fund as detailed in Subcommittee Report G on pages one thirty-five and one thirty-six of the report and recommendations. Approval of this Article seven B will appropriate four million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars to defray water direct costs and transfer one million two hundred and eighty-three thousand twenty-six dollars for water indirect costs to the General Fund.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, and we now move to Article seven C. And Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise and appropriate seven million three hundred thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. And you have the rest of the text here. It's a majority vote, Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget for the Sewer Enterprise Fund as detailed in Subcommittee Report G on pages one thirty-three to one thirty-four of the report and recommendations. Approval of this Article seven C will appropriate seven million three hundred thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars to defray sewer direct costs and transfer four hundred and two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for sewer indirect costs to the General Fund.
Further discussion, Peter Neville.
Precinct ten, I'm wondering whether or not the indirect costs being transferred here are the, is this, is this, is this the taxpayers of Plymouth subsidizing the deficit in the Sewer Enterprise Fund?
Anyone here to respond to Peter Neville? We have Lynn Barrett, who is our Director of Finance, responding under Article seven C.
All of the indirect costs that are transferred from each of these enterprise funds to the General Fund, it's actually money coming from the Sewer Enterprise Fund to the General Fund, and they're paying for all of the fringe benefits of the employees that work for that department and other indirect costs that are appropriated in the General Fund, so it needs to pay it back.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Will the noes please stand? We have Everett Malaguti voting no. Thank you. Article seven D, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars, items seventy-three to seventy-five. Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund as detailed in Subcommittee Report G on pages one thirty-seven to one thirty-eight of the report and recommendations. Approval of this Article seven D will appropriate six hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars to defray solid waste direct costs and transfer two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars for solid waste indirect costs to the General Fund.
Majority vote, further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move to Article seven E. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise and appropriate two million six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget for the Airport Enterprise Fund as detailed in Subcommittee Report G on pages one thirty-one to one thirty-two of the report and recommendations. Approval of this Article seven E will appropriate two million six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars to defray airport direct costs and transfer two hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars for airport indirect costs to the General Fund.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article seven F, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise and appropriate one million six hundred and eighty-five thousand, items eighty-one to eighty-two. Mr. Salerno.
In the unanimous vote of twelve zero zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget for the Cable Access, the Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund as detailed in Subcommittee Report G on pages one thirty-nine to one forty of the report and recommendations. Approval of this Article seven F will appropriate one million six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to defray cable direct costs. There are no indirect costs charged to this fund.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. And before I take Mr. Salerno's motion, I do want to put into the record Article eight, I have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. Mr. Salerno moves that we adjourn this session of town meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. This session of town meeting is adjourned at three oh seven PM. We will be here Monday evening at seven PM. We will begin with Article nine unless we have any motions to reconsider. Thank you.